This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Ellison for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams? Is somewhere in the building?
He's in the building.
He'll be here shortly. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for today. We thank you for life. We thank you for our health. We thank you for the opportunity to be here and gather today, take care of the city's business. We pray for wisdom and knowledge for this council as they make these very important decisions. I pray for the Mayor and his staff as he leads this city. We love our community and just pray that God will follow your direction, your guidance. We'll give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting, work session, and City Council meeting held on March 26.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of March 22 through the 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
I have two today. First, Ms. Joan Henry and Marie Johnson. Okay. We're glad she didn't come. For as children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community. Communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential. Effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, I, Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Gadsden and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live.
April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we thank you for proclaiming it for Gadsden and Edgewall County. And there are about 100,000 people who live here in this county, and 25 percent of them are children. Children that need to be safe, children that want lives that are successful. And unfortunately, last year, DHR of Edgewall County stated that there were 629 cases of abuse reported to them in Edgewall County. And that involved 959 children. So we've got some work to do, and we need your help. We need you to make sure that you protect your children by making sure that they're not any kind of dangerous one-on-one situations, that any program that they're involved in, that they have good background screening, and that children know that they can be abused by strangers, but more than likely it's going to be somebody they know. And we want you to volunteer. We need your help. Get a blue ribbon and make a donation to help prevent child abuse in Edgewall County. Now, Felicia Page, and she's from the Gadsden City Board of Education, is responsible for those cute little pots, so she could...
We at Gadsden City Board of Education have taken a role and initiative to ensure that children are safe even beyond school hours. So we have after-school programs at 10 locations throughout our school system. Our students provided you with coffee beans, so the smell of coffee, it's beans, and those are flower pens, and they were made and created just for you by the students of Gadsden City Schools. So thank you for all you do in supporting Gadsden City Schools.
More people having kids and less people taking care of them.
All right.
And if we didn't have some of the family success and all the different nonprofit organizations around here, and the next one I'm going to be reading about too, it's amazing how bad it would be. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how many cases, or do you have a guesstimation of probably how many cases are not being reported?
Right.
That's what scares me. That's frightening. We talk about the ones that are being reported, but I'm sure there's probably that many or more that's not being reported, so we have a problem, a serious problem.
Report child abuse, doesn't matter who it is.
Right.
I'm telling you. I'd like to ask Patricia Falcon and her staff to come up. She is the Executive Director of the... Very... You want to introduce your staff? I'll let you do it. Whereas preventing child abuse depends upon community-oriented programs and services that involve a collaboration of professionals to prevent further victimization of children. Child physical and sexual abuse continues to occur when community members are unaware of how to appropriately report child abuse and neglect. There is no racial, social, or economic class that is immune to child sexual abuse. Child abuse not only directly harms children, but also affects the entire family system. Free specialized services are provided to the community, including forensic interviews, counseling, forensic evaluations, information and referrals, community awareness, education, as well as support and advocacy for victims of child abuse. The James M. Barry Center for Children plays a critical role in the lives of children who are victims of physical and/or sexual abuse or witnesses to a violent crime. The James M. Barry Center for Children also assists children in feeling comfortable by providing a safe, home-like environment for them to provide information about their abuse. The James M. Barry Center for Children works collaboratively... There's some big words like mayonnaise in this. Collaboratively with all new law enforcement jurisdictions, the Department of Human Resources, and the District Attorney's Office to provide a multidisciplinary response to investigations and intervention of child physical and sexual abuse. Therefore, I, Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, on behalf of the Alabama Network of Children's Advocacy Centers, hereby proclaim April 8 through the 12, 2013, as the James M. Barry Center for Children Week, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to protect children and support the intervention efforts provided by the James M. Barry Center for Children.
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Guyton, and City Council members that are here today. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to stand before you and to speak about the James Barry Center for Children. We are a nonprofit here in the community and truly, I believe, play a critical role in the investigation of child abuse. We work collaboratively with many United Way agencies and across the city and across the county to ensure that, you know, children, when they need to come in and have a forensic interview and have a disclosure of child abuse, that they have the opportunity to do that in a setting where it is safe and comfortable for them to do so. I want to introduce to you my staff that's here today because I'm just one person in that group and certainly could not, we could not do the work that we do without our, the rest of my staff that are here. I have Betty Wetzel, who is our lead forensic interviewer, and Kristen Taylor, who is an intern with the University of Alabama, working with us this semester, Tammy Cassidy, who keeps us all together, is our administrative assistant, and Kara Brooks, who is our counselor, also provides forensic interviews and evaluations. And introduce to you two as well, Ryan Conde, who's with Atala Police Department. He is one of our board members, and I appreciate all of them being here. Thank you.
How many counselors do you have now?
We have one full-time counselor, and that's Kara Brooks.
Are they... Do you have one for the parents?
We refer our parents to Family Success Center, or to, there's two other counselors here in the community. Parents do come in...
Do we do have another one now at Family Success Center, right? That's for the family?
Yes, we refer those to Diane Ashley over at Family Success Center. That's right. We have two other counselors here in the community that we refer parents to.
I knew we didn't have one for a while, but we got it back, thank goodness.
Yes, yes, yes. And so, you know, again, we work to provide that forensic interview. You'll see in the brochures and information that we've provided for you that last year, and we actually had a decrease in our numbers in interviewing 266 children. That was down from 317, I believe. Councilman Avery, you asked about the number of children that are victims of child abuse, and nationally statistics tell us that about one out of every three girls and about one out of every six boys will be sexually assaulted in some way or another before the age of 18. And so you can imagine certainly the number, when we're only seeing 266 of those children, as Joan talked about, of the 900 that were reported for DHR, that certainly there are many, many children that are under-reported in this community. One of the other things I think that I'd like to point out to you is that we're also available to interview children when they've been a witness to a violent crime, and as Chief Crane can tell you, that we've had to work collaboratively with Gadsden Police Department to investigate some of those kinds of crimes where we have been able to provide children an opportunity to come in and have an interview when they've been a witness to a violent crime. And those witness interviews have been instrumental in the last year in helping get some convictions through the District Attorney's Office. You know, we are so thankful for the support of Gadsden, and you'll see in your information that, you know, Gadsden certainly has the highest percentage for us, and at 31 percent of the interviews that we provide come from the City of Gadsden. And we're seeing a little bit of an increase in the outlying areas, but certainly one of our highest percentages come from the City of Gadsden. So thank you for your support. We have a blue pinwheel out here for you as well, and we want you to show that with your support along with the blue ribbon bows, and it really speaks to the fact that you're aware of child abuse in this community and the needs of our community and the support that we need for the children of the community. Also having there for you an invitation, next week on Tuesday, of course it'll be during City Council meeting, but we do have a pinwheel ceremony, and that'll be at the District Attorney's, at the courthouse, and we'll have our local judges, and they're able to speak on behalf of the Barry Center as well, along with our fundraising efforts for our golf tournament that's coming up. So please feel free to look those over. If you ever have any questions or would like to come have a tour of the Barry Center, I would love to invite you at this time to come anytime, and we'll make that available for you, because I'd love for you to see the great work that's going on at the Barry Center. Yes, sir?
When I pick the paper up and I see Barry Center is interviewing, it makes your heart drop. There's just nowhere in the world to thank you all or nothing, except just to say thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I would have to concur with that. Every time you read of, or hear of, an incident where a child has been abused here in Edgewall County, in particular the City of Gadsden, you will see that the Barry Center is involved in the investigation and prosecution of those persons who are responsible for committing these heinous crimes toward our children. We congratulate you on the work that you do.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, certainly what you read in the paper are only a sprinkling few of the ones that we actually do interview, and so in response to that, we have begun to provide more and more over the last two years, presentations to the community, to our schools, to our churches, really in helping everyone, to our teachers, and helping them to understand that their responsibilities as far as a mandatory reporter, and, you know, making sure that the community as a whole is aware and actively involved in raising awareness for child abuse. So thank you. I appreciate it.
One more thing.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, Patricia, as we look, as I kind of glance at these statistics, and thank you so much for the information and everything you've provided, what kind of jumps off the page, and I think a couple of us have noticed this, is the rural percentage.
Yes.
Can you speak to that?
We are noticing, that's what I was talking about just briefly, is that, you know, our highest percentage certainly comes from Gadsden in terms of the children that we interview, but we are seeing more of that from our rural areas. You know, some of that comes up towards our area, towards Albertville, that's still a part of Edgewall County. A little further out past Hoax Bluff, we're seeing many children from that area. And certainly, I think you're all aware, and even Chief Crane could speak to that, but the level of drug influence and, you know, that impacts child abuse, as well as, you know, the internet crimes that are committed against children. Many children are not aware, you know, of how they're targeted and lured online, and so that certainly is something that, you know, we've become more aware of even so.
Would you expound on mandatory reporting?
Oh, absolutely. Actually, too, just to let you know that the Barry Center will be featured with the Gadsden Symphony Orchestra in their upcoming show, and they're going to allow all mandatory reporters to come in for free. So we're really excited about that because it's really an opportunity for us to bring awareness to mandatory reporters and their responsibilities. Alabama state law says that anyone, basically, that works with children, that would be a nurse, a doctor, a teacher, anyone in the school system, just about every kind of doctor that you can imagine, social workers, counselors, any daycare provider, they are all pastors as well. And that's where we've had some dilemmas with pastors not understanding fully that their responsibility in the law, and we've done some presentations for them. But all of those people are considered a mandatory reporter. In the way that the law is written, is that if they have a reason to believe or suspect child abuse, they are to report it. Most people will think that they need to have all the facts, and they need to have talked to the children, and what we tell them is we don't want them to do that. We want them to have that child come to the Barry Center and give us the opportunity. We're specially trained in that area, and that's what we do, and, you know, we want to be that first person really to get the details from the child. So all of those people are mandatory reporters. If they fail to report, they are at risk for criminal, you know, prosecution at that point. And we have had that here in the county where that has been prosecuted. So it's really important that mandatory reporters understand their responsibility.
You look at these statistics, and they are horrendous. But until you see, actually, see the own, the person itself, it blows your mind that there's that kind of thing out there either, that these people are not even human as far as I'm concerned.
Amen.
And you would be willing to fund you all the way if you just look and see what they do, and we really do appreciate what you do.
Well, I love that you said that about that funding. That's wonderful. Don't y'all agree? But thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, one of the things that we love in the work that we do, and many people ask every one of us, how do you do this work and continue to do that work every day? And it's because truly, you see when children can go through the process of having the opportunity to disclose the details of the things, the most traumatic things that have happened to them, they can be provided counseling, they can be provided support. We can be there and sit with them, in court with them if needed, through the prosecution. We can sit there with them at sentencing, then those children have the opportunity to have the healing that they need, and you can heal from that. And so, you know, child abuse, child advocacy centers certainly can provide that service. And so thank you very much. I appreciate so much of all of what you do in support of the Barry Center.
You just keep trying.
Absolutely.
All of you, yeah.
I wanted to ask her a question. Is Jessica's Law, did that pass in Alabama? Is Alabama one of the states? There's only a few that hasn't passed that where it's like minimum 25 years first offense, I believe.
I'm not totally sure. Maybe Chief Crane, if you know all the final details about that.
Me?
Yeah. I'm going to research them.
There you go. Thank you very much, both groups, and we thank you for the gifts. I will say a little something all the blue. I saw Debrick's eyes light up. I think he thought maybe that Mayor Larry Means had been over here from Edgewall and brought all this stuff too. If I, Debrick...
Be better for him to go.
Find my place here. Unfinished business. Ordinance amending section 130-202B6. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It removes guidelines for lighting except for B4 district from design review and replaces them in the zoning ordinance. The Planning Department requests a change in an effort to eliminate contradictions between the guidelines and the ordinances and to better provide for enforcement of the lighting regulations. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
B is an ordinance amending section 130-411C2 and 6 regarding all street parking facilities. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It specifies the parameters of lighting allowed on all street parking facilities. In pedestrian areas, to arrange from a minimum of one to a maximum of two candles and not to exceed one high-foot candle. In a pedestrian area budded along the property line. Light levels in parking lots shall average from two- to five-foot candles in a uniform manner. Floodlights are prohibited. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Explain that.
I just did. You didn't listen.
This essentially says that you can't shine a light into a neighborhood. It regulates, lighting can be a real nuisance. It can be a nuisance for traffic, for neighborhoods, so we have to have some control over it in that this is what this is addressing.
I know we've had discussion after discussion about this issue, and, you know, I'm not going to labor on it because it's, this is one of those feel-good ordinances that we do that, you know, either make some people feel good or we make criminals out of other folk. I just don't see how we can enforce this, but that's okay. We'll put it on the books and we'll deal with it.
We can enforce it, and it's certainly something that, I don't think is a feel-good. Who would like a floodlight shining on their house all the time?
Yeah, but we're directing this towards businesses. I have a floodlight from my neighbor that's not a business that shines in my house all the time. You want to deal with that?
You very well could.
You can deal with that, right?
She's violating our nuisance ordinance. You will do something with it. You could.
Okay.
Well, there's one good thing about it. When the criminal lurking around your house and there's a bright light, he's less likely to be there if that light's on.
That's why I don't complain. That's why I'm trying to figure out why these people...
Oh, I thought you were complaining.
No, I'm not complaining. That's why I'm saying, why are we complaining about lights? And the complaints I get from my constituents is they need more lights, and here we are trying to limit lights.
Light it up, you get a clear shot that way. Absolutely.
Okay, number nine. This is a time...
We got a bid on it. I mean, we got a vote on it.
I thought we voted.
No, we didn't. Disgusting. Like most things, we talk together.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Debrick.
Number nine. This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution. Ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 823 North 34th Street in District 7. State of Alabama, State Farm Bank, FSB, Bruce Binham, and Brandy O. Binham are the last-known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in May of 2011. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of it?
While they're looking at that, I know we asked you upstairs, can you tell us where we are with demolition on housing, and what's the situation?
We currently have approximately 10 to 12 locations that have, the notice to proceed has been sent to Public Works. They have had some equipment issues in the past few months. We rented some equipment for, initially was going to be one month, turned into two months. We turned that equipment back in. I believe the excavation equipment that Public Works uses for our demolition has been repaired as was stated upstairs. I believe those crews have been pulled away from their demolition duties and are involved in the cleanup from the storm. But we do have about 10 houses that are pending demolition right now.
Okay. So we're going to get to them eventually?
Yes, we are.
Okay, where are we on 823 North 34th Street?
I want to just go ahead and move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
The next public hearing is a resolution assessing a nuisance abatement lien against property located at 1106 Bretwood Drive in District 3, the State of Alabama, First Family Financial Service, and Clifford Spade being the last-known owners. This was a demolition that has already been performed, and the amount is $9,977.84. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is one of these prime cases and prime examples of property that we try to clear up and clean up from nuisance abatements. We got, what, 11, 12 houses now? But this is going to be a lot that's going to probably sit there, and if the property owner next door don't make us an offer, it's going to be overgrown again, and we already got $10,000 tied up in it. There's no way the property owners are going to come back and claim it, because the lot ain't worth $10,000. The lot probably is not worth a few hundred dollars. So ladies and gentlemen, if you have property next door to you that the city is torn down, houses and stuff, please come up here and make us an offer so y'all can keep the grass cut and get us out of the grass-cutting business. I mean, we got a sale going on. We'll let it go real cheap, I promise you.
Are you saying any offers will be accepted? Is that what you're saying?
I'm just, let me put it this way. I hadn't turned down one in my district yet. If we can get out of the grass-cutting business, I mean, we look at a potential probably over the next few years, if nothing happens here, we're going to probably have $15,000 tied up in this lot, unless, and it's only valuable to the people next door, this particular lot is, because nobody's going to come in there and purchase it and pay it off and bill on it. So if you got one of those lots next door to your houses, please, ma'am, and please, sir, come up here.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 11. Our next public hearing is a resolution disapproving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for Katie Thie Cuisine located at 102D Elm Street in District 7. This is for an on- or off-premises retail beer and wine license. The zoning administrator disapproved the license because the church is located less than 300 feet from this establishment. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in... Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
12 is a resolution reappointing members to the Building Code Board of Adjustment and Appeals. This reappoints Samuel Feers and Betty McElroy for a term expiring July the 30th, 2016. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
13 is a resolution designating JR Countryman Highway. The city recognizes the need to honor an outstanding former city councilman for his contribution to this community and to acknowledge the hard work and dedication he displayed as a councilman and leader in the city during his lifetime. City Council wishes to honor JR Countryman's memory by designating a portion of the new second section of Highway 411 from the new intersection to be located in the vicinity of Ewing Avenue and Princeton Avenue in the vicinity of the limits as JR Countryman Highway. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Countryman worked on this project time and time again for... Since then, forever, all he would talk about was this project coming through there, the highway coming through there. He had a lot of help with Senator Larry Means. He was on board with him. He really helped him push this thing, and I think, in my opinion, strictly my opinion, JR Countryman and Senator Larry Means was the whole driving force behind this highway getting where it is today.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, you're not going to find a stronger advocate for that highway than Mr. Countryman was. He was a very, very staunch advocate for that project. Mr. Countryman really pushed and drove the petition stage of the project. Once the signatures to gain it, its attention were secured. Former Senator Larry Means was very instrumental in ensuring that a capacity project actually got on the books. So that was very important. That ensured that there was funding for the project and that it got Aldat attention. And then, of course, you know, I don't think it needs to be overlooked. The relationship that our city engineer and, of course, a relationship that I had with the Aldat state engineer at the time really served to keep it on the books at a time when capacity projects were being kicked out of the budget and those projects were not being funded. So, you know, again, you can't understate the drive that Mr. Councilman... I mean, that Mr. Countryman, I'm sorry, that he engaged in to ensure that this was put on the books. So I think this is very appropriate and very... To use what little French I know, very much apropos to honor him with the renaming of the highway.
Where is the paving on it? I noticed that there's paving on this end. Is there paving pretty much all the way now?
I'm not sure about the percentage completion, but it is very much underway, very noticeable from... Very noticeable from Hooks, Legs Road.
Okay.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
New businesses? Are there any new businesses?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with GWB Architects for rendering a plan for the new Coosa River Park that we have on the books.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to... Shane in here?
No, he's not.
Chad, the mayor.
May I explain to us, please, what we're doing here and the reason that we're having to go to Coleman for this organization?
Oh, Decatur.
Decatur, I'm sorry.
Yes. We're looking at a plan to do some development on the river, across the river from some property that we own there behind the Kmart parking lot, and we did a refinance of a bond issue a few... Well, last year, I guess, and we had to designate the savings of that money to a project, and we had to do it within three years. And some of it went to the Board of Education because part of their money was tied up with that, and the rest of it, we wanted to do some riverfront development. Alabama Power Company has about five or six acres there beyond the 4.3 that we own on the river, and it's behind the strip shopping center over there on Hood Avenue, and we're going to be able to lease the property from them for a dollar, four dollars, and we plan to do some boardwalks from our property all the way to the bait shop and down to this property, and probably a walking track, some lights, some picnic tables, some little places you can stop and fish if you go there, or pull up in a boat if you want to fish from the bank. A lot of people don't have a boat. So we want to enhance this project, and we had to have a rendering of what all we needed. And there's a company that we're using up in Decatur who does a lot of riverfront up there. You know, they have the Tennessee River, and if you go up there and look around, you'll see a lot of the developments up there, and they're qualified to do this type of design, and that's why we picked them locally. I don't know that we had anybody who has done, not that we don't have some good architects. We always use local people anytime we can, but we felt like we needed to get somebody with a lot of experience and a proven track record to do this.
Thank you. And this park will be directly, if you just look out the window, across the river, it'll be direct across the river from City Hall here, and I think it'll be something that we, as citizens of Gaston, would be very proud of, very proud of a riverfront development that's ongoing now.
That it?
That's it.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new businesses?
Yes, Mr. President. I have three. I have one ordinance and two resolutions. I'm going to do them one at a time, if y'all don't mind. The first one is an ordinance 08-4. It's an ordinance amending fiscal year 2013 budget in the amount of $46,000 for the acceptance of two grants from the Etowah County Community Development Committee. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Okay, I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This is monies that was derived from the Community Development Committee on the 1% sales tax that's collected here in Etowah County as money is going toward community development in the form of new housing to provide jobs and local businesses with income and sales potential.
Any other discussions? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
The next is a resolution authorizing acceptance of the grant from Etowah County Community Development Committee in the amount of $16,000 to be used to provide water and sewer access to Waring Avenue in District 6. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to say that I do appreciate Ben and all the efforts they had getting this money from Etowah County Community Development Committee because this Waring is in District 6, and that would put four or five additional new houses in there, and anytime you can build new houses in the city of Gaston, you're just moving forward.
Yep. And we would like to thank Ricky Hunter, too, also, who was on the board, who was instrumental in helping me get through this.
Yeah, Ricky was one of the thriving points with Ben to make sure we could try to get this moving along. And Ben says I did leave him out, but I do appreciate Ricky Hunter for all his work on the water board.
That's it. Okay.
Okay.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
The next one is a resolution 08-3 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of grant from Etowah County Community Development Committee in the amount of $30,000 to be used to provide water access on Marjorie Circle. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider this resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Okay, and I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just thank God we don't have to hear this anymore when Ben's been bugging us with his mind of yours. Congratulations, Ben, really.
While I got the floor, I'm going to say it again. I'm going to keep saying it as long as I can. This $30,000 is going to finish up a complete section up there, furnish a... Making way for at least 18 homes in just that one area. In the surrounding area, and I'll probably be back asking for more money, but there's a potential for 87 new homes to be built in that area. And when you think about it as a community development, y'all, you've got to think about jobs. For every one home that's built, it provides four jobs for a year. So if you can build 100 homes, how many jobs would that be? Four per home per year. So everybody in the United States is talking about all this other mess. At least us here in Gaston, Alabama, are building new homes and moving forward while everybody else is thinking about... What do they call it? Derek secu-ari-tation or what? Some kind of mess like that.
That's close.
Okay, I'm through discussing. I appreciate the five and a half years.
Yeah, that's not all... That's not all Ben put into this project. Oh, he has put a lot into this project.
I tell you what, and this is the gospel truth, y'all. If I had listened to people who knew what they were talking about, this project would have taken about six months, but due to my inability to think for myself properly, it took five and a half years. So thank you for that.
You know, that goes for any other part of town, any district, any business wants to expand, houses be built, whatever. We'll try to work something out to get it done. That's exactly what we need to do.
That's the whole thing, Mayor, about Waring Avenue, you and South Gaston.
That's right.
We've talked about North Gaston and the bypass up there that's now JR Countryman Parkway, and we're wide open to go.
That's right.
I'm really built on... Anyway, that's all I'll say.
Now, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any other new businesses?
Yes, Mr. President. I have one item that I'd ask for consideration today. It's an ordinance adopting the 2013-2014 Community Development Block Grant Program Budget.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move for passage.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Again, this is the 2013-2014 CDBG Program Budget. It's amazing. I can remember when I was here at City Hall back in the mid-'90s, the budget at that time was $1.4 million, our block grant was at that time, and we're down to a $900,000 budget. And, of course, for those of us that don't know, this is monies that cities across the country use as seed monies for a number of their community development initiatives. And as you can see, this money is slowly being taken away from us, and the opportunity to engage in some of those larger-scale projects is being lost in the process. So, you know, again, we ask from time to time, and we continue to ask, that you petition your elected officials in Congress to make sure that they're fighting for these programs because this is how we develop our communities and our cities.
No new taxes?
This money is... This money is spent on in low-to-moderd-income areas that... Also spent on organizations like the Berry Center. It's... We're funded through that, so it's a program that's dwindling, but still there.
Very good point. About $65,000 of that $900 is earmarked for public service agencies, so that's significant. I think there are a couple of groups here who would agree that that's, you know, that's significant in terms of helping to augment their budgets.
But they also would agree that the cuts that we just gave them to hurt their budget, and that's because of the mindset that we have in Washington, and... But we keep sending those guys up there, so they don't need us complaining.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any other new businesses? Department reports committee's board came over.
Thank you to the councils and the mayor. It seems like it's been a while since I've been here, so I'm going to remind you all that we're having First Friday this month. Chief Crane's already told me he would see me there, and let me just say right off the bat, I appreciate his support, the officers that are there. We also have sheriff's deputy reserves. Let's kind of go back a little bit, and First Friday's been going on for quite a while, and every once in a while, we just need a reminder as to what it's about. First Friday is about our downtown merchants, and I think y'all would all agree with me that our downtown appears, looks, and appears to be very successful, and it is. And a large part of this is because of the positive things that we bring downtown. The First Friday has brought a huge positive spotlight on our downtown area, so I'm very proud of that, and I want to continue that, and I want that to be... I want that to be what it's all about. We provide entertainment. This week, we've got Trading Faces at Third and Broad. We've got the Gaston State Show Band at the BB&amp;T at Fourth and Broad, and then we've got the First Methodist Praise Choir at Fifth and Broad, and then Characters Entertainers, they're going to kind of showcase a little bit of the Civil War play that they're starting, I think, next weekend. So they'll be down in front of Alpha at Second and Broad. So that brings people downtown. The classic cars bring people downtown. That's... You know, the classic cars come, and their wives shop, hopefully, while they stay with the cars, but, you know, they can get out and eat, they have a good time, they enjoy our downtown. We have calls from all over the state of Alabama about that. But what I want us to remember is that First Friday is about shopping with our downtown merchants, eating in our restaurants downtown. There are some rules and regulations that we have that periodically I'll get a call from one of y'all that says, "Well, what about this?" We want to focus on our downtown merchants. Therefore, we don't allow booths to be set up with other people coming in from outside selling. These downtown merchants, they pay rent, they pay power bills, they pay everything, so we try to protect them for that. We do bring in restaurants, the food vendors, because our restaurants can't handle the thousands of people that are downtown. So that's the reason we have food vendors, but no booths to set up. So that's just as kind of a reminder, that's why we do that. People, there are many, many, many great causes out there. So in March, what we do is we set up First Friday as our nonprofit month. If you have a cause that you're wanting to promote, we do that in March to kick it off on First Friday. We could set up people all over the place going up and raising money, and that's... We just want to keep the focus on our downtown merchants. So that's why we have to say we don't allow people to come in and set up to raise money. A lot of great causes, and we know that, and we appreciate that. One thing, too, and you did a great job in the paper, talking about Kimmerendine. I mean, I guess the big thing this month, and if you grew up here, you know about Kimmerendine. At least, I hope you do. I used it for everything. I've been lathered with Kimmerendine from one end to the other. You know, my dad took it for stomach ulcers. So that's going to be our kickoff this month. So we're going to say, let's come down and buy it, and you're going to be able to buy it from here on out now. Jackie Beck's come in, and he's... If you read the paper this morning, he's bought the formula and did a couple of little changes in it, so it's not going to look quite like tar, but it's still going to have that smell that it had. So, but it's going to be a great thing. We're going to kick that off. You'll be able to buy it downtown at Gazmo Ratty, so from here on out, and all the different here on out, and, and all the different pharmacies and a lot of different places around town, so. Um, I guess that's it. One other thing that I, I do take some heat on this, is we say, you know, First Friday's not a pet-friendly place. When you have all those people, and I see dogs that are this tall, they're taller than some of the kids there, they say, well, my dog would never attack anybody. A, a dog, if attacked by another dog, you just don't want a child in there, so please don't, uh, leave your pets at home for First Friday. Uh, we also have some, um, leftovers or left behinds that people are not really good about cleaning up after their pets. So when you take that into the stores, it leaves a, a, a mark that we really would rather not have.
Katie Kitter expound on that a little bit.
I believe she did.
I think that, uh, and, and I know, I mean, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a pet lover, I am, but this is just an event that we say, when, especially in the summers, it gets hot, you've got, you've got those, you know, little paws on the, on that hot pavement, I know my feet get hot, so. But that's just it. It's about our downtown merchants, so come and shop, sip, eat, play, and learn local in downtown Gaston. We look forward to seeing you Friday afternoon, the streets are closed about four-thirty, and we hope to see you there. Any questions you have with me?
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council, please let me share remarks of one minute.
It might be must have.
Ben, you wanna start?
Whew, one minute. Okay. I do wanna remember, uh, Kathleen Estes this morning, I know, uh, you'll wanna say a few words, Johnny, but Kathleen's been in UAB, how long now, Johnny?
About two weeks now.
Two weeks now, and she's getting better and so on and so forth, but we let you expound on that. I got a new business, or we do have a new business on, uh, in District Seven, Ray's Barbecue, as good as anybody's in town and the county, so come up and visit Ray's Barbecue, it's next to Paul's Mountain Meats on Knocka Little Road. Friday morning, about one o'clock, my doorbell rang. Every week, I got something on the police force. This time, uh, I went to the door with, uh, my wife's weapon that she insisted I go with.
Oh.
Yes, yes, it won a baseball bat. I opened the door, and thank goodness, it was a police officer. Uh, Officer Bonds, I believe is his name, right, Chief? Officer Bonds. Uh, and I'm not gonna expound too much on it, but every one of us have had our mailbox knocked down in the past, used to be, it just happened every day. I'm on number twenty-two myself, this was number twenty-two. But hopefully, this is gonna send a message out to, uh, the youngsters and the oldsters in our community to quit knocking my mailbox down and your mailbox down, and probably we'll get something done about this. Finally, I did sign a warrant to that effect anyway, so we'll see what happens, gonna be there. Um, break-ins in cars is happening in my district also, and I'm sure in y'all. We had a rash of kicking in the back doors for a while, and, uh, we kinda got that pretty well handled, but now they're starting on cars again. So, only thing I can say to you is, please lock your car, or put it in the garage, lock the garage, the one way or the other. If you didn't hear them, to that effect, or whether they'll have to make enough noise where you can get out there and get them, but do lock your cars. And Channel ninety-nine being put on AT&amp;T, I'm still pushing that. Walt Higgins wrote in, he's for it, so everybody ought to be for it. I'd like to see it on AT&amp;T, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do wanna kinda elaborate what on Ben said about Ms. Estes. She has had a rough time. She's been in hospital now probably three weeks, she spent about two weeks in UAB. She's a, a good lady, I guarantee you, and she appreciates all the prayers and concerns everybody had for her and the cause while she was in hospital. Uh, everyone of us on the council knows Ms. Estes. She's always tries to help us in any way, she's a big supporter of the city of Gaston. You'd think Gaston's no other place to live, you talk to Ms. Estes, she's right there with you all the time, and she just supports the whole city and everything we do, and I just really appreciate all the prayers and support you've gave her since she's been in hospital. She did come home last night, yesterday afternoon, she's finally getting to eat after about three weeks, and I know she's glad of that, and I talked to her last night, and she was watching some kind of sporting event on TV, and I didn't keep her but for a minute. We do appreciate that. I do wanna remind everybody that the third Saturday in April, the music on at the gazebo in Alabama City will start, kicks off at five-thirty, there will be free food, free entertainment, bringing lunchers, and just come on out, that's the third Saturday in April. That's all I got.
Mayor.
I just would like to, um, since we have the Berry Center here today, to, uh, acknowledge, we have thirty-something social agencies here in Edgewalk, in, in our area. Uh, we probably the most caring, giving, uh, community that I've ever heard of, really. Uh, thirty-something social agencies serving people, and I just wanna say thank you to all of them, especially to Berry Centers, since they, they're one of the outstanding ones in our group. Thank you.
Robert?
I'm gonna try to keep it to a minute, even though I've got several issues. Um, I, I voted against the denying of the alcoholic beverage license, simply because that's an eating establishment, and I feel like they should have the same rights and privileges as any other eating establishment that sell alcoholic beverages when people come in to have a meal. Um, the, the other, um, i- i- issue, I talked about the feel-good ordinance, uh, when it comes down to lighting. Uh, we, we do a lot of things in this city, and we talked about it upstairs, we pass a lot of ordinances, and we set up a lot of perimeters for people, good people, and we make criminals out of them by putting in some unenforceable laws, and hopefully, one of these days, we'll get away from that and, and stop doing these feel-good ordinances, and, and really be serious about, uh, putting things in that we can really enforce, so, um, but my minute is up, so I'm through.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. President. Do wanna say it is, uh, it's good to see Mr. Eccles back, back in the swing, and, uh, I, I do wanna publicly say that, uh, I, you know, I appreciate this council for having the confidence in me to allow me to chair the meeting, but more, on last week, but more importantly than that, that, that was an opportunity for me to sit in the chair of one of my heroes, so, uh, so that was, that was very important for me last week, so, uh, so I appreciate that. Um, and, uh, and the only other thing is, I, I do wanna thank the mayor's office for, uh, and this council, for, for the ordinance that we, uh, that we passed today relative to riverfront development. Um, it's something that none of us have been short on in terms of commentary from the folks in our district and the city, um, about what are we gonna do with our riverfront. Um, you know, that's a very complicated endeavor, but I think we've taken a great step forward in terms of, uh, developing our riverfront. That's gonna make it attractive now, uh, it's gonna show developers that we're serious as a city, and, and so I'm, I'm excited about where this is gonna take us. So, again, thanks to the mayor, and, and thanks to this council.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, once again, uh, thank you Berry Center for the job that you do, we will continue to support you one hundred percent here in the city of Gaston. Uh, K Moore made a, 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 an amazing presentation to the Kiwanis, uh, last week, a week before last, about DGI, about, about First Friday, and downtown Gaston, shop, eat and drink downtown, so, uh, we encourage you to continue to support all of our downtown businesses in the city of Gaston. Uh, the weather, you know, it, it, it is getting to be more desirable than we've had in the past. The weather's changing, we're gonna have spring-type weather now, you know, and one of the things that I, that I saw this past weekend, or today, rather, we had three robbers yesterday, um, in, in the city, you know, and I, I just encourage you, and all, all three victims were women, uh, I encourage you to take safety precautions, you know, when you're in your vehicles, and when you stop at traffic lights, and when you see people approaching you. Uh, I know, you know, it's, it's an easier thing to roll those windows down, you know, and get fresh air now, but be conscious of what's going on, and who's approaching your car, and who's around you at all times, and in addition to what Ben said, lock your vehicles, even if you're at home in your garage or your driveway. Let's, let's see if we can't prevent people from taking from you that which is yours, but take every safety precaution that you can to protect your, um, the, uh, we, we talked about volunteers in the city of Gaston, how, how wonderful our, our volunteer base is in the city of Gaston, in Edgewalk County. I want, I want to, um, I want to also encourage, uh, our citizens, our, our businesses that are in the city of Gaston, Edgewalk County, to continue the effort that we need from them to be corporate citizens in the city of Gaston. Uh, every business, you know, located in the city of Gaston, has a responsibility to be a citizen of the city of Gaston, so step up to the plate, you know, and be corporately responsible for those things that are happening in our city. And, uh, thank you, sir, if I took more than a minute, I think it was worth it.
I have an opinion.
I, I think, I think it was worth it.
Mayor?
Thank you.
I wanna go back over here, since all y'all only had a minute.
Sure, I can go right ahead.
Talking about something that is very important, very important.
Uh, one reason I ran for this job is, I didn't like politics, and, uh, I found out common sense doesn't apply up here too much. Not with, not with these guys, but in other levels. But anyway, uh, I wanna talk to you a minute about the SROs, school safety. Uh, you know, in light of what's happened everywhere, and eventually what everybody says when we've seen all these shootings, is, uh, you know, we've never had anything like that before. So if you don't get prepared for it and, and have a defense against it, then, uh, it can happen anywhere, small towns, large towns, wherever. So, because of that, we started working a couple, a month ago, I guess, on a bill to Keith, and he thought it was a good idea, and so he's been taking names, people calling in since we started publishing, I think we have around eighteen or twenty retired people. But Representative Craig Ford, when he heard about what we wanted to do as a bill, he had a committee about school safety, they've been having some meetings, there's probably sixty, seventy, eighty people on that committee from all walks, you had educators, teachers, uh, civic-minded clubs, people, politicians, you had all, superintendents, you had all kind of, of people who were at the meeting. So we go over and we go through what our bill is, and what I wanna do is basically explain that to you. Uh, we have a bill with the SROs that Representative Ford, they all voted a hundred percent that they were for that. It was really simple, it was not very expensive, and it could provide the safety we need for our kids, teachers, support personnel, and, and everyone else. But what, what it does is, anybody who is certified, we wanna hire them, and we can put SROs in all the schools. We have three at Gaston City right now, and then we have, uh, one who, uh, goes back and forth between the middle schools, we don't have any in the elementary schools. But, uh, what, what we wanted to do, there's, uh, one thing we wanted to delete from, from what you have to have now, and that is the physical fitness test. Uh, most guys that are signing up are between like low fifties up into the mid-sixties, and they don't care anything about going to Montgomery and taking a forty-hour, eighty-hour course and include the physical fitness part of it. And the reason I'm saying that, uh, so we, we've advertised the bill, and what it will do, they would still have to do continued education, the SRO education, and they would still have to qualify every two years with a firearms training, and we feel like that's, that's all we need for that. You know, this is, well, anyway, I'll say it anyway, they're not gonna be running anybody down, they're gonna have guns and radios that'll outrun anybody that needs to, to do anything, and, and the big thing on, on the SROs is having a presence, they know they're in the schools, somebody's there, somebody's gonna go in, they know they're gonna have to deal with somebody who knows how to shoot. And the other thing is, you know, we'll probably try to have cars at all the schools as well, where they'll know that there's somebody on duty there. And a lot of the people who are retired, you know, they don't wanna work a lot of hours, they, you know, they, we can, we'll have enough, probably we can rotate it around, depending on what everybody sort of wants to do, we can probably do every other week if we get a few more people. But if we don't have that physical fitness part deleted from the way things are right now, then you won't have many signing up, and we won't have any people available, and we start hiring full-time people, uh, I can't tell you what the expense will be on that as far as being able to afford it. Uh, also, what, what we wanna do, in addition to that, uh, we've run into a problem, it's a local bill, it's been advertised, but our delegation, uh, excluding Representative Ford, Representative Butler has contacted me, and he wants to tweak it a little bit. You know, that's a code word in Montgomery for, I want what I want in it. Uh, and it really, and I'm not gonna be ugly, but I'm gonna be truthful, it really bothers me that, uh, we elect people to go down from this whole area, and only, uh, two of them live in Gaston, but every time we do a unanimous resolution and ask for something, they always either change it or they don't do it, and, and usually, a couple of them who don't live in Gaston are the ones who sort of lead the way. We know more of what goes on here, we know more of what we need than they do, and we're not asking anything, but I'm gonna read you the bill and the law current as it is right now. A certified law enforcement officer in this state may keep up or maintain their continued education courses for two years without being employed as a law enforcement officer to allow them to re-enter the field of law enforcement without having to take the refresher training. The training will be maintained by the law enforcement officer and sent to the Alabama Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, uh, which is called APOST, immediately after reemployment as a law enforcement officer within a two-year period. The courses must be acceptable and approved by the commission. After a two-year absence from employment as a law enforcement officer in this state, a previously certified law enforcement officer in this state shall be required to apply for renewal for his or her certification, which will require successful completion of an approved eighty-hour academy, and eighty-hour academy recertification course. That's what I'm talking about. These retired guys, they're not gonna wanna go to Montgomery and do eighty hours. They would still have to do the firearms training every two years, and, and also, they would have to, uh, uh, do the SRO continuing education. A previously certified law enforcement officer in this state who has not been employed as a law enforcement officer for two years or more in this state may be provisionally appointed for six months by the employing agency upon their submitting a notice to the commission, and you get into some rules and, and all that. Now that is Section Three and Four of the bill. Section twelve, law enforcement officers who have honorably retired from law enforcement in this state and who qualify under Title thirty-six, twenty-one, nine, the Code of Alabama, with twenty years or more of service, are exempt from Sections Three and Four of this rule. Okay? So in other words, if you've been here twenty years, or anywhere twenty years, it can be ABI, FBI, anybody that's been certified, you have to be certified to have a gun in a school, you can be exempt from those other rules. And all we're asking is, leave the physical fitness part out. Uh, the sheriff is meeting with APOST in Montgomery today, and I'll let, you know, see what he says and what he finds out, but after repeated conversations with a couple of the local delegation, you know, they just don't want to leave that out. And like I said, I don't see what the problem is. It's about safety, not about whose bill it is, or which party you're in, or, you know, any of those kind of things there, it's about school safety, and that's a lot more important than being in charge or controlling things. So, that's what you're gonna be hearing about. Let me make sure I got everything I wanted to say here. Um, the bill has already been advertised, there wouldn't be enough time, I don't think, in this session to change anything and advertise it again, and all they gotta do is pass the bill, it's a local bill. There is a bill, uh, that another senator has in Montgomery, and it's a statewide bill, but all it does, if you're retired, uh, you can't make, and drawing retirement, you can't make over around twenty to twenty-two thousand a year, and so his bill would open it up for him to make all they wanted to make. Well, that's not gonna cover what we need here, we need this about the physical fitness being deleted, and, and it says over here on, uh, in the other section I read, that that sort of negates that anyway, so they don't have to do anything except pass our bill, because those things don't, don't, I guess everybody, what, Chief, do you know if everybody's contacted you at least twenty years or more? I know you probably don't know that, but most of them are gonna get twenty years or twenty-five before they retire.
Mayor, have a question?
Yes, sir.
And maybe the chief can answer this too. Once they're on the force, they've had that physical, do they go back and take those?
No, sir. You can be a policeman and get hired the first time and take the physical test, and you can stay for forty years, and you're gonna have to go take it again. So I don't know why it's gonna be a problem to put more requirements on people who are retired working as SROs than it is a full-time police officer. That's a good point, I'm glad you brought that up.
So it can't be about that, then, it's gotta be something else?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Politics.
All right. Well, they're gonna put our children in jeopardy for politics.
So what I'm asking you to do, if you want our schools to be safe and have this on board by Oc- uh, August when school starts, you need to call these folks and tell them to get off the pot and pass the bill. There's no reason for them not to, and they'll come out and say, APOST is, we can't do the, you know, it's a local bill, that's all we gotta do, it's a local bill, it doesn't matter what APOST says. In the, in the law already, existing now, you don't have to do all that stuff, so, we're not asking anything unreasonable. Senator Phil Williams, I'm gonna give you phone numbers, and this'll be on TV, three-three-four, two-four-two, seven-eight-oh-oh, is in Montgomery, that's his office. His cell number, two-five-six, four-four-one, oh-two-oh-one. Representative Becky Norgdon, three-three-four, two-four-two, seven-six-zero-zero. Her cell number is two-five-six, three-two-eight, one-six-five-three. Her cell number is 256-328-1653. Representative Matt Butler, who seems to be the main one, he, you know, told me that he went through the physical fitness when he was 42, wasn't much to it, and he's a reserve officer, so I guess he knows a lot more about law enforcement than all of us do, but not being ugly, I'm just saying. This is Gadsden, okay? This is Gadsden. It ain't Rainbow City, or it ain't the county board of education no more, it's Gadsden. Cell number is 256-312-3128. And then, of course, Craig Ford, he's on board undoubtedly. And, you know, I just want to say how important this is, and I don't want this to get tied up over some nitpicky thing about a physical fitness test, and us not have enough money or enough people to do the SROs when we need them when school starts. And I'm not being ugly, I'm being real frank, it's a no-brainer. It's a no-brainer. We need these SROs, and if you don't want your school safe, then don't call them, but if you do want them safe, you better call them and put the pressure on them, because, you know, they respond to pressure. It's all about the votes.
Hey, Mayor, excuse me. I think there was a gentleman back there that didn't get, I think there was a gentleman back there that didn't get Mr. Williams' phone number. He liked, he was, could you give that out one more time for us, please?
I sure can.
I'll have Brian put him on the screen, too, when it's some Channel 99.
Okay. He's gonna give the number one more time, Bob, so he did it there.
441-0201. Becky Norgdon is 256-328-1653. Matt Butler is 256-312-3128. And Representative Ford is 413, I mean, 256-413-7611. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. I think we may have made history today.
The longest.
The longest, the longest council meeting in the history of Gads.
Mayor, I just want you to know.
I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
I love the mayor.